All right. You'll please stand with me, I'm gonna do the invocation tonight. You'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you in prayer, we'd like to thank you for this day. We'd like to thank you for all your many blessings, for allowing us to meet here tonight, to do the business for Stokes County. We ask in your guidance as we make decisions, for your wisdom. We pray for travel, mercy, and your grace on our way home tonight. In these things, we ask in your name, amen. You'll continue to stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the public hearing for the Meadows-Danbury Water System Interconnection Project. We'll call the public hearing to order and ask that, is anybody that didn't sign up to speak that would like to speak, or sign up to speak? Okay, hold on. I gotta approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the public hearing. There's one person signed up, to Bob Ritter, Nancy Ritter. You'll please come forward and just tell your address and your name, please.
Robert Ritter, 1055 Cardinal Lane, Walnut Cove, 27052. My wife won't make it, she's in preparation for some medical services tomorrow, so they change the time on it, such is life. I'm a little concerned about a tower being close to my house for two primary reasons, one being what it does for the property values. I've got a lot of money invested in this house, I have life savings, and I'm concerned about what will happen to the property values there. You also have the Dunn Oak properties that are close by, and you have a contractor building 300,000-plus homes right next to the Dunn Oak, across from the property there, the Dunn Labs Zone. And they're planning, they've got one house built, they're planning on building about eight more, but if there's a water tower there, are they gonna build those houses? Are they gonna put that much money into it, and ask people to pay that kind of money? And then another major concern happens to be the digging of a well to supply this tank. What happens if they hit into one of the major supplies that we function off of with our wells? And what could happen with that? So we have those two major concerns, but then two, the community of Meadows isn't large enough for a public water system. It really isn't. And if you wanted to put a tower, the primary people that are gonna use it happen to be the businesses right there at the junction of Dodge Town and 8 and 89. You've got the old prison site that already has a well, you have the college grounds there, and then those businesses in the immediate area, so that wouldn't affect them. That supplies them and takes care of it, and wouldn't affect our homes and our possible impact on water. So I would ask that you reconsider the location of this particular well.
Water tower, you mean? You mean water tank?
Water tanker.
Yeah.
Tower.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that one of the walls is getting ready to build a house just a couple hundred yards down from where the proposed location is, and I don't know that she'd wanna build a house there if that's gonna happen. So that's my position at the present time. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There's no one else signed up to speak. Go ahead.
Bill Lester, Mark Lacy are here with OKC Engineering to provide information related to the public hearing.
Okay, that's fine.
And of that, of those two, I am Bill Lester with OKC Engineering. With me is Mark Lacy, and Sam Tracy, actually. Those two gentlemen are doing a lot of the detailed design stuff and working through the PER and the environmental review. If it's okay and pleased aboard, what we'd like to do, so that we have any minutes, is maybe give a little brief background, and I don't mind standing here and maybe try to help you if you wanna ask some questions about something, some of the things presented to you also tonight. So, real quick, as you know, we were fortunate enough to get some funding for the project, and going through that process, there are a lot of things we need to do. We're going through the preliminary engineering report and environmental review document. One of the things required as we do that is what we're doing tonight, is gathering citizen comments. I think we've had some other comments through email, addressing those, letting the agency speak back to us, and then moving forward, doing whatever might be required from that. So, the need and purpose of the project, you know, going out to seek the funding to begin with, you know, there was diminishing water supply capacity in the existing wells in Danbury, with the yields, the yield of the wells down, and having some concerns with those, you'd been drilling some test wells and having problems, unsuitable capacity, and just having some kind of overall problems making that work. There's also an initiative to kind of regionalize your systems, you know, you operate the system in Danbury, you've got some things at Meadows, and while it might not be in this project, you've also got, you know, your southern project, you know, with Winston-Salem Forsite Supply. So, the overall initiative grew out of the merger regionalization feasibility study to look at those problems. You went into the PER that brought us before you tonight with needing to take a look at the alternatives, you know, looking at additional wells here in Danbury. Well, based on everything that, just kind of summarized, you know, that was not a feasible alternative. Looking at a new water treatment facility somewhere in the area, well, I think some of you have probably been in and out of meetings we've had, where that's actually a very desirable alternative, but it's a very expensive alternative. We're gonna need a lot more grant money and some things for that. So, the actual cost of that alternative made it unfeasible with this project.
Would you say that one again? I kinda missed part of what you said.
One alternative would've been a new water treatment facility. And while I think we would love to have that, for this project, the amount of funds, it was cost prohibitive.
Okay, got it.
At the proposed project, an interconnection with the early college water system, kind of a beginning of making things regional, if you go back to the merger regionalization feasibility study, kind of a step one, phase one of the way that was gonna work, kind of became the preferred alternative and looked to be closest to budget. You know, that's expanding the supply that's already in place in the Meadows community, taking the test well further, looking at improvements, adding the elevated storage tank, and the connection of water line to make regional systems so that they can both, you know, kind of share supplies and sources, you can share back to Danbury and take care of things that way. Now, that's for this funding. I don't wanna keep bringing back up, when you look at the merger regionalization study, you know, that was a bigger picture. There was a lot of things that were kind of recommended to grow off of that, and this is kind of a phase one, and then you can grow off of that and look as we seek funding in the future. For this project, funding is being provided by NCEQ, the State Revolving Fund Program, with zero percent interest loan and some principal forgiveness. Principal forgiveness is basically loan you don't pay back, grant. The total funding was $5,208,600, of which $3,906,450 was that forgiven loan or grant, leaving $1,302,150 at that zero percent interest. Now, not exactly related to the specifics of the project, but just so we could say this, the annual cost of that loan, kind of a raw cost, will, it'll get fine-tuned when you go through the LGC and get everything finalized and closed, is $65,110 annually. And what we're supposed to do, at least, maybe make everyone understand, if you didn't have any more customers, that could be, for a customer using 5,000 gallons, up to $15 additional per month. And that's more like $10 if you're down around 3,000 gallons per month, but just in general, to make sure we're kind of understanding what we're talking about. Now that also, if you look at the handout that Mark prepared, that's kind of across the board, too. Everybody treated the same. When you make the rate adjustment, the way you decide to move forward, if larger users are charged more, that makes the smaller user, which is the one you usually protect, you know, not have as much of an impact. You could have institutional and large businesses pay more, and again, that takes the burden off the smaller customer. That's, I think, across the boards, the way you do it now, am I right? But as far as the rate, the same. Everybody pays about it. So, you know, we can decide later, but the idea here is just so that you understand the increase for the, you know, although we were very lucky for the grant amount, there is still a portion of it that's loaned. So, again, that's zero percent interest loan, which is the best kind. So, that being said, along with this, you see that, you know, the 27,000 feet of water line is gonna be able to connect the system and create the different supplies and pressures. It will provide some lower pressures in spots that are of concern now in town, with the way that, I think there's one tank on the hill that provides some questionable pressures for some older lines in town. It's gonna take care of that here in the Danbury area. The proposed tank that was in question, it's gonna provide the pressures in that area and allow for some of those future phases that were discussed in the previous regional talks. I don't mean to say that this next, I wanted to say this earlier, and I'm not saying it necessarily in response to some of the comments earlier, but one thing about a tank, you know, it is preference whether you want it near you or not, I get that, but if you've got water line in the area that is pressurized, the one thing that local residents do, if they are within a certain linear foot to a fire hydrant, is their insurance rates usually do improve. So, there are some benefits, even if you're not connected, that some folks would. Doesn't mean they're gonna like that, I'm just, I am stating that, that is one thing we've thought about, is increased fire protection will be provided that is not provided without an elevated storage tank. You know, booster pumps, where you try to keep a line pressurized just from a well and booster pump, they do not provide that same rating and ability. So, that's kind of our general summary. If you have any questions, I don't know with the public hearing if I'm supposed to directly answer anything, but I am more than willing to try to answer anything the board wants me to. And I've got Mark here with me to maybe get into some details if you have some questions like that.
Thank you. Do board members have questions at this time? Go ahead.
Ma'am Chair, what is the effect of a tank on property values? Is there any date on that, or something we need, could need to go look at, or?
Well, I don't mean this in the wrong way, I'm not an appraiser, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
I do know that reduced, I guess, increased insurance ratings, or however that's calculated, having fire flow, that usually helps. It might not help as much as someone who is uncomfortable with it being close by.
Helps with the property value, you mean?
Right.
Of increased insurance.
And I do not say this, you know, we're all different, you know, I've got some development here in my house, and I guess I've jokingly told the developer, "I wish you'd put the tank there and not the houses." But, you know, it's just different, I mean, there's different development, and it's something that some people may be okay with and some aren't, and I just don't know what the appraised amounts would be with that. I do know the fire rating does get better.
That's something I guess we can go look at.
Right.
Later, or get some other input on that. What's the, could you summarize just real quick, what wells are involved in this? Does it include digging additional wells beyond what we have? So I know we dug a second well up there.
Right, I may have to have Mark help me a little bit here. And you're going to further develop one that's already started? Am I right?
That's right. The, so this project, through this funding source, will include two wells, first being the one at the early college site, we'll make some improvements to that.
One that's been there for a long time.
The one that's been there that's currently in use.
Okay.
The second one is the one along Dodge Town Road to the, what's that, the southeast, I guess, of the early college. There was a test well dug several years ago, would be finishing that well out, you know, bringing it online and connecting it to the system. And as a side note, I guess, there was a future project that is funded, the one through ARC, that would provide a third well. And the first place that we would look for a good site for that well would be at the Walleye Tank Site.
That's not a part of this funding, but if the money allowed, that's what the Appalachian Regional Commission money would look at.
So, the current project only includes the two wells that are already drilled, and improving them, basically, and bringing one of them online, then a future plan might involve that third well, which would be in close proximity to the tank? Is that what you just said? Okay. This is a general question, but how, 'cause I've heard it, you know, other places in the neighborhood, but what does it do to the current well, existing wells, when you come in and punch a new well? 'Cause, like, in my neighborhood, you know, I had a well, and then we had two other houses come and drill wells, and I didn't notice any difference in my well, but is that a, is that some kind of a phenomenon that happens, or?
Well.
Just generally speaking, not specifically on this project.
NCEQ puts regulations in place that should protect against that. And with residential wells, that's why you probably don't see that too often unless, you know, there's a problem and you're not really getting a lot of yield anyway. In the process that you have to go through with a municipal well like this, through the test well, you know, it'll be tested, it'll look to see, you know, what the drawdown is, and it will not let you draw it down to where any, anywhere in the cone of influence of the well, it allows it to draw it down to where it's at a dangerous level. And outside of that cone of influence, it should have absolutely no impact.
Oh, okay.
And that's different for every well.
There's a process then that automatically evaluates and addresses that issue?
There's a drawdown test that will be done while they're testing the wells. Probably have already done it, to the two that are existing, and it'll be done again.
Okay.
We have to redo it, but yes, they've been done before, and they'll definitely be looked at.
I have a 25 gallon a minute well, and two wells drilled in close proximity to me were, I think, both over 40 gallons per minute, and I didn't notice any difference, so I was just kinda curious about that.
As a side note, that sounds pretty good for some of the problems in this area for wells, that's real good wells.
Yeah, we're in a kind of lucky situation. Lord bless us on that. Okay, that's all I have right now, ma'am chair.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions at this time?
I guess one point, one additional point, I'd like to go out there and look this over physically now.
Yeah.
I mean, I've looked at all these charts, we've had on it before, but I think I need to go kind of see what, where everything's at, so.
Okay.
Make arrangements through Shannon, do that.
All right.
And if you need any help from our staff, you know, let Stuart know, or Shannon will assist as we need to.
Sounds good, all right.
Thank y'all.
There's not any other questions, comments, or anything? We'll close the public hearing this time. We'll move on to the public comments for our general meeting. We have no one that signed up to speak, so now I'll move on to our comments from fellow commissioners, starting with Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, ma'am chair, I'd just like to welcome everybody that's here participating with local government tonight. We're always anxious to hear your feedback, and hopefully we have some folks online as well. So, thanks again, and that's all I have, ma'am chair.
Commissioner Barneke.
Great to see everybody out here tonight, and everybody watching, hope everybody had a great weekend, and again, great to see you.
Well, I'm pretty much just gonna echo what our previous two commissioners said. Thank you for coming out. It's always a pleasure to see you here. Enjoy people participating in our governmental process, and for everybody watching livestream, thank you for doing that. Once again, I hope everyone did have a good weekend, and I'm looking forward to some wonderful sunshine tomorrow, we've had several cloudy days. Haven't had any rain much my way, so my well, I hope holds up good. I can tell you that. Twenty-five, I'm hearing 25 and 40 gallons, and I get seven, so, Rick, I'm gonna tell you, y'all are very fortunate where you live. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone and everyone watching online, and let you know that Chairman Nickleston is participating with us through the phone, and is having some problems with his back, so he wasn't able to make our meeting, but he is here virtually, so, and just good to see all your faces, and being here to participate, and just looking forward to a week of sunshine, I hope. That's all I have, Shannon.
Welcome to everybody here, it's good to see such a good crowd here. One thing I would like to mention, and I'll let Mark and Bill correct me if I'm wrong, when we established the public hearing date, we took comments and questions two weeks prior, and we'll take them two weeks after, correct?
Yes.
Is that right? So if you have anybody that's watching or here in the meeting, or you all know anybody else that might have any issues, still encourage them to reach out, because we've been answering them, we've gotten by email, and keeping us further record, too. So if there's anything else you wanna follow up with, we've still got two weeks of open period of time to submit those.
Do they call you, or email, or what?
They can call.
Any way they want to?
Email, come in, either way. And I still have the copies of the actual report in our office, if anybody wanted to look at that, I can get you a copy of that to look at, too, with the environmental report and anything that's in there, it's a large, large document. They can come in, or, and we've had some to email, and just one really, that we've had to answer questions back to and present that, so anybody feel free to reach back out if you've got other questions or new questions.
All right. Chairman Nickleston, do you have any comments?
Apologize, I can't be there, good thing I asked, I can start to come off a little bit, but, sorry, everybody, we're the next meeting, thank you.
All right, sounds good. All right, we're gonna move on to the conflicts of interest statement before moving any further. Does any board member have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda tonight that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
None.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the amendments, board budget amendments, and the tax office items for approval.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And that first item on discussion is the replacement of the HVAC at the DSS Building. We've got Stuart Easter present to the board.
Good evening.
Did everyone get a copy of the quotes, or have you seen the quotes?
I think they were in our agenda. If you pull up, click on that item, they should be there.
One says with air handler.
Proposal with air handler, and proposal without. Are y'all seeing that?
No.
Okay.
We got them.
Okay. I don't know if you've got any questions or not, but I'll just kind of give you a brief explanation. This unit's an '04 model, and the condenser coil currently has a leak in it, and we're replacing about 20 pounds of R22 every three months, at a cost of $35 a pound, which is about $700. And you might say, "Well, why don't you fix the leak?" Well, we've, the leak is in the condenser coil, which is outside, and which is really thin, and you just, you just can't, you just can't patch it or repair it good enough to know that you're not gonna have, you know, leaks. So, you're down to replacing the coil. So, I got a quote to replace the coil, just the coil itself, and not replace the unit, and to replace the coil, it was 20,000, well, $19,759, just for coil replacement, and that's about a 12-week lead time. So, instead of, I just think it's more sense to, if you're gonna spend 20, why not go ahead and replace the unit, since it's an '04 model? And I've, I had it quoted two different ways, with two different contractors, with the condenser coil and a new evaporator, and then I had it quoted with the condenser coil and a new air handler. And if you don't change out the air handler, you're gonna have an old fan, old bearings, and an old, just the whole, the whole thing is old. So it's just, I feel like it's better to get it all out and go back with new. And, of course, you can see the quotes, one was 56, and one was 65, so that's a pretty good savings between the two.
All right.
Any questions? Comments?
Questions?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Ma'am Chair, it's 17 years old, so that's, is that the normal shelf life of this thing?
Yeah, it is.
Pretty much.
It is.
That's what I was thinking.
If you're getting close to 20, that's pretty much it. And it's got the R22 in it, excuse me, which is being phased out, it's gonna get to where you can't get the 22.
Unless you do the coils, and then something else is gonna break on it, so as you get that done, right, then you're kind of...
You're just gonna keep putting money into it.
Yeah, I've had that same situation at home, so I kind of relate to it. The air handler is same age, right?
Mm-hmm.
And basically the same level of wear, worn out, basically?
It is, yeah. And this unit will have new controls, it'll be a whole lot more economical, too.
There will, there'll be efficiencies.
Yes.
Definitely efficiencies with a new unit over one that's 17 years old, it'll probably save us a good bit of money.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we should do the air handler in the unit itself, personally.
Yeah, it's kinda like buying a new turret on the front, leave the old one on the back. That doesn't work too good, and I can speak in the back for this, being in the maintenance field, that's something you don't wanna do, if you're gonna replace one, replace both. And while we own this, Stuart, I'd like to get copies of all the quotes we got.
Okay.
And the reason why I like it is, from a maintenance supervisor standpoint, everybody's honest, and if I get asked by a citizen of this county, "How do you know he was the lowest?", I will be able to tell them, you know, "We're using taxpayer's money, and I like to spend it wisely." So, that's the reason I'd like to have copies of that.
I can get them to you, that ain't no problem. And I kinda look at this as, you know, I'm at my house, too, that's...
You sound like me.
That's the way I look at it. If I'm, you know, I'm spending the taxpayer of Stokes County's money, but I look at it as I'm spending my money, so I try to be, I try to price it different ways, and try to, you know, do what makes most sense.
I deal it.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I agree with what they're saying.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do both.
We can email it.
Yeah, we can email you those copies, I have additional quotes, all of them.
Are they close together? Pretty close to each other, or not too much?
Almost like a $9,000 difference.
It's around 10 grand difference.
It's a pretty big difference.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Stuart was mentioning was that he's got about an eight-week lead time on ordering these, once he orders them to actually get them in. And Joy said there is money in capital reserve to replace this unit with, so if the board would be in approval, if we could approve this this evening, so we could go ahead and order those, and it's gonna take us at least probably closer to two months to get it to the end.
Move it to action.
Can't we do that with consensus, can't we, to action?
Yeah, if you're ahead of moving it to action.
I am.
All right, it'll become action item B.
Billy, do you happen to know how much is in capital reserve left after this?
Three hundred and some thousand dollars now, before this.
Before this, before you spend this, you mean? Okay, that's all I need to know.
All right.
Hey, Shannon, a quick question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that'll matter, we're seeing, will we be able to use any amendments?
No, unfortunately not. We've already asked that question during the meeting. In one of the many, many calls we've sat in, about every county has asked if they can replace old HVAC units, and they're doing it. And they're doing a big capital NO on that one, so no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have any other questions about this? Chairman Nicholson?
No, I'm good.
Okay, we'll move it to action then. Thank you, Stuart. We'll do this on the action. The next item on discussion is the request to change the Board of Trustees' standing meeting. Commissioner Morse, do you have any?
I'll just summarize it real quick.
Okay.
We, our HOC had asked, Hospital Offspring Committee had asked if we could do this so people could plan and basically make the whole process more efficient. And so we've asked it if it could be changed to five o'clock. And I think the board expressed the desire last time to change it to 4:30 instead of five. So we're fine with that. Just to be able to hopefully get it completed and not have to recess till after the regular commissioner meeting. And we'll certainly try to do that. It should be easier if you start at 4:30. And so I recommend that the board do that.
Do we need to take action on that, Shannon?
If you just do a general consensus.
Okay. All right. So that'll be the second Monday of every month? Is that what we're doing?
It's the, it's the night meeting of every month.
6:00 PM Monday?
Second Monday, first meeting.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Nicholson, do you have any questions about that? Okay, all right. Well, then we have consensus to, to make that change. Okay, so the next item is the request to change pay rates.
So that one's me. So I've got a couple requests included in this one agenda item. The first one is the lead public safety telecommunicator supervisor training officer position that was approved in this year's budget. And when we started looking at that a little closer, it was not actually sent to Mercer to create that job description or salary grade classification. So just trying to do a little house cleaning. We sent that to Phil Robertson with Mercer, had them make a recommendation on it and also clean up the job description. So they've done that. So you've got the job description attached to you. And also their recommendation is to take that to a grade 39 instead of a grade 39, instead of a 37. That won't be any kind of funds needed. The, the position currently is, is at, is above that minimum, so it wouldn't cost any money other than on the 2% when you get the longevity each year is based on the minimums. That would go up slightly, not a noticeable amount. They would have plenty in their budget to cover that portion of it. This is just to get that on the right grade level and to approve that job description for that position. The other one, I was asked to look at the IT Director, Plan and Development Director, and Public Works Director positions that were originally presented from the Mercer Group at a grade 47 and then moved back to a 46. I did ask Amber to reach out to Phil Robertson with Mercer to see if he still was standing by that recommendation of a 47. And he did send a letter in stating that he still stood with that decision of a 47. I would say to go ahead and move those back to the 47 just for future planning of when we have to post those. Two of those positions that people are in have been in them 30-plus years. So it's gonna be time to eventually, when they retire, ever post those positions. And we probably be able to attract somebody a little faster at that grade. Again, not a huge monetary change. The only position with the, the one position is a relatively new one. Would be a small difference in the minimum, but under, under $1,000. And again, on that same 2% longevity is based on the minimum, so it's a small amount difference in that budget. But we'd have that money to cover those with those, with those salaries. So not any huge salary increases, just changing it for, just like when, when Mr. Robertson did this. It was really based more on the position, not the person in at the time. So to fix that for future time, just like we fixed the telecommunicator position. For, for future reference to get those at the right, at the right grades. So just if, out of request that we could, could change those. And if everybody was in agreement, we could do those on action at the next meeting. None of those are a huge rush to fix.
Okay.
And look at and look over. If you have any questions about the job description also on that telecommunicating position.
Okay, do any board members have questions at this time? We won't have it on action till the next meeting.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with action until next meeting.
All right.
Andy, any questions on that?
I don't know if I need to ask exactly how we got a position I want the board to look at. I need to wait for the process of the question is, can be mentioned now?
Is it a specific, just grade class change? That you're asking about for a specific one? Yeah, just, just, just to be safe, let's just wait and, and bring, and bring that up in there under personnel just to be sure that if it's something we can add, we can discuss as we can.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The next item on discussion is the request to open public health nurse to position. Amy Martin.
Got the cost, Julia, the next eight months out there. This.
Okay.
This is just the rest of the budget here that the cost would be.
All right.
Um, we have a nursing position out there that's not been funded in the budget for a few years now. And I just request that we can open that so we'll have more dedicated to COVID instead of the whole clinic having to pull and working COVID now. And I actually do have enough to fund this till next fiscal year with our COVID money. So it wouldn't be anything that the county would have to fund. And the building has got 86ed, so we won't be doing the building. It was a yes, then it was a no, then it was a yes, and I just said quit. And so now we're going with funding the nursing position. I just have to have it approved to be open so I can start posting it out there to be open.
Okay. And it's in, it's in our budget, just not funded.
Yeah.
And also, I mean, talking with Julia, I think that once your COVID funds are expired, once we finally get the green light to use the American Rescue Act funds, everything we've sapped through, we could fund that probably up until when that money is finished in 2026, at least for a couple of years.
They said we could use it for infection control, and that's what this is, is a CD backup, CD position strictly COVID right now. And there's 10% clinic if we needed it. But it's just gotta be approved to be open back up. But I can fund it until next fiscal year.
Sounds good. Do you hear that, Andy? We found something we can spend money on.
Oh, thank you.
American Rescue funds, I should add.
Can this wait to action till the next meeting?
It can. It, it really doesn't matter. It just pushes back when we can advertise. So just whenever.
Okay, I'm fine either way.
If you vote tonight, we can open tomorrow if you vote. We have to wait two more weeks.
I think it's fine to move it to action so we can go ahead and advertise it.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
What, what did you got? Did you ask for this to be funded in the last budget cycle we went through?
Honestly, we didn't think COVID was gonna come back this strong. And now we're seeing it come back. And we have days where we have three nurses working on COVID when they actually need to be in clinic. We've had to cut clinic schedule back again when we were back this summer to see more patients. But we've had to cut it back now for more testing. And just, the vaccines aren't up that much right now, but it's mainly testing every day.
Okay, so that's the reason you didn't request it in the budget, right?
No, because we, it was, it was smooth during the budget time there. And, you know, then it got crazy about August.
Okay, and then, and so we think it, between this and ARP, it'll be funded for two or three years. Before, then the county will have to take it then, right?
Right.
If we keep it, keep it funded.
Right, and then honestly, we do need another nursing clinic. We've just put it off for years and tried to do it the way we've been doing it. But at this point, we can.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Any other questions? All right, we're gonna move this to action on the item C. All right. The next item for discussion is the fire commissioner appointments. And I think Amber may have that.
So there are two fire commissioner terms ending for fire service level commissions. Just so it's coming, Fire and Rescue Association recognizes Brad Mitchell and Kenny Pierce and considers for the next term, which is from October 2021 through October 2023. And there's a civilian member of our commissioner position as well. We previously had received no applications for this, but we actually received one today. So we'll revisit the civilian member of our commissioner position at a meeting.
All right, so you should have those in your agenda. The recommendation letters. Do board members have any questions on those?
One quick one, the, the civilian one is currently open and has been for a little while or whatever.
Uh, probably about a month or so now.
Okay, so we'll fill it like it real quick, right? Right behind these, okay.
Yeah, I set the application up for the fire marshal.
Oh, okay.
Discussion, yeah. Glad you received it today.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, super.
Okay, so do we need to take action on this or we can wait till the next meeting?
For the two appointments, we need to open the further nominations.
Make a motion that we close nominations with the two individuals that's listed in our memo.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I need a motion to nominate Mitchell and Pierce. Or I'll poll the board on Mitchell and Pierce.
You don't need to, you can just move it to action right away and then we'll advertise it.
And then?
And then you can poll with it.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, sounds good. Then we'll move on. The item F, request to change the EMS pay.
Okay, so what you've got here in front of you, and I know we spent a little time last week discussing some of this, so just let me know if you have any questions. I'm gonna try to run through it relatively fast. So a couple budgets ago, we changed the EMS overtime pay from the halftime pay to the true time and a half for overtime pay. The method of paying those employees has been a little bit of a source of confusion due to the salary being paid and then the overtime and because they work a fluctuating work week. After a lot of research and a lot of going back and forth on this, it's my opinion, as well as several others, and we, Nick, over me from our county attorney's office has been pretty involved in this with us as well, that the best solution in order to, to fix all of this is to change these, our EMS employees to an hourly rate. This is the most transparent way to accomplish it and, and get them paid correctly so they can see how they're being paid and know, know what they're gonna get each month. It would require setting an hourly rate and range for the employees. This way, the hourly rate is set, overtime is one and a half of that rate. Our personnel handbook already covers this and states that we pay time and a half for hours worked over 40. So we, we'd be doing that exact thing, so there's no need to change that in the handbook. We'd need approval to change the EMS employees from a salaried employee to an hourly employee and set the rates of pay. EMS employees would continue to work their 218.25 schedule for nine pay periods and their 242.50 schedule for four pay periods, those are the longer months. The new salary ranges for a full-time paramedic would start at 1620 with the midpoint being 2107, the maximum of 2593. This will also work well with our current longevity system and the employees will still receive their 2% annual increase. The new salary for an advanced EMT would be 1420 per hour until they're fully qualified as a paramedic and then would be increased to that 1620 per hour rate. Our current employees' new salary, hourly salaries would be computed so that no one would receive a reduction in pay. The new method of payment wouldn't affect the exempt employees, which are the director and the operations manager slash training officer, and those would remain salaried positions. So the, the way we would do this is set, set those rates and we would go in and make sure that when we change the hourly rates, because this is up to the hourly rate that we're currently at. They're now at like, if you figure their hourly rate's much lower than that, and it's just not gonna work to keep them at the same rate that they're at. So if the board's in agreement with that, we would request that you would approve that at this meeting and make that retroactive back to the start date of October 1st, October 2nd, 2021, which is the beginning of our latest pay period that we're currently in right now. This change will not require any additional funds at this time, but we may need to add or move funds closer to the end of the budget cycle just due to increase overtime and the overtime budget was cut in last year's budget, which wouldn't be directly affected by this change, but we did add six employees. So although we cut the overtime budget. So making this change now would give us several months of data, enable us to make an accurate prediction of what is needed in the next year's budget. And the HR department, Gail Tucker, and, and then would actually provide each employee with a letter notifying them of the change and their new rate of pay. They'd have full notice before this pay period is over, what their new rate would be. You know, just simplify the whole process for everyone involved to be able to pay them the hourly rate every true time and a half rate, and the employees will be able to really read their pay stuff. Now it's a very complex process with the salary that's been the source of a lot of headaches and turmoil. So I think everybody would be relieved if we could put this change made and, and move on with that. And I think that EMS Director Brandon Gentry is here and he and I have discussed it several times at length. And he's done a lot of hard work on figuring a lot of this up too. So if, if the board is in agreement, we would love to make a move on this with even admitting this change in this pay period.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, I'll see what kind of questions we have from the board. I know we've kind of looked over this and there may be more questions. Go ahead.
And just one, Madam Chair, this definitely meets the Fair Labor Standards Act. If we make this change, we don't have to worry about that any further, right?
It definitely meets all the, every last day things. Nick, who is our, from our county attorney's office, is completely ensures that it's a completely legal way to do it because it's literally just paying the over 40 for the true time and a half. There's no confusion of a salary-based pay plus trying to figure an hourly rate on that and a different hourly rate for a longer month. It's one straight hourly rate and they get paid for any hours worked over 40.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Thank you for all y'all's work on this. I know it's been really confusing and we've went over and around and tried to, to figure it out with the Fair Labor Standards Act. It's really complicates matters. So I know it's took a lot of time and work to, hopefully this will be, like you said, very transparent and they'll be able to see exactly how their pay is figured and it won't be any questions anymore about how that is calculated. So I think it's, it's good. It's the pleasure of the board to move this to.
Ask Andy.
Andy, do you have any questions?
I'm good along with it.
Okay, is everybody good to move this to action for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be item D.
Have you done this anything in your opinion about that?
Thanks, good.
All right, so the next item is the request to change the EMS part-time pay rates.
Okay, so this, this is sort of a separate but related request, or I wouldn't add it to this meeting too. Back in the, the last budget, Brendan, Brendan did ask that this be looked at, but it didn't quite make it into the budget, I think, during some of the, the changes happened and everything. He struggles a little bit with keeping enough part-time employees. And he's requesting that we adjust the part-time rates to reflect the years of experience to help fix this issue. Attached is a letter from him, pretty much giving you the rundown of what he is requesting. If he can get this done, it would help him to, the new schedule is attached and just kind of look over those rates of that, what we're currently paying and what he's asking to do. Right now, no matter if somebody has no experience or 10 years' experience, they make that rate that you're seeing, the current rate. So if you have a paramedic that might have 20 years of experience, they're gonna be making that 1630. And there's no, they don't get longevity or anything like that or benefits because they're part-time. The only time they would get an increase would be if there was a COLA or something of that nature. So what, what he's proposing to do here is to help fix that situation by giving a base to where he can give people a little more pay based on their years of experience. This also, the reason I'm adding it to this agenda behind what I just asked for with fixing the paramedic salary and then the hourly rates is, is if we could attract some other part-time help that's more consistent help, we may be able to reduce our overtime rate, our regular overtime rate. We wouldn't be paying your higher-paid employees that are full-time employees all of the overtime. You can fill those gaps sometimes with your part-time help. And this, the last year or two has been terrible for, for Mr. Gentry and his department with people being out from COVID exposures, COVID quarantine periods, all kinds of things. Lots of overtime has been had. So if you could have those done, filled by part-time when you can, when they're available, you could reduce that overtime rate. And we could, like, again, with that data from the other, look at this for several months and just see if it really helps to, to offset that some. I really believe that it will, it will. And to be able to, you know, if you could offer somebody that's a 15-year paramedic veteran, you know, $21 an hour in place of 1630, and that's, that's a big difference for him to be able to, to attract and retain some, some good part-time help. So that's the only reason we're asking for this now along with this, is to hopefully fix this whole system at once and maybe make his job a little easier to fill those positions.
All right. Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing it'd be interesting to do, if you guys can, you and Brandon can track it, is to, if we approve this, is to, maybe during the next budget submission, just for information, let us know how the reduction in overtime trade off with the increase, how it ended up like a net zero or?
Exactly, just remind me.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be good information to have if it's not too much trouble to track it. The only other comment I would make is that. The only other comment I would make is that, and we had talked, I think all of us had talked to Brandon separately a little bit on this, but there was a real strange situation going on with the shortage of paramedics and EMTs. And, you know, we're having, I think Brandon said, we're running a lot of calls in other counties, which it kind of used to be the opposite, I think. They used to have to help us, but, but...
A lot of mutual aid has happened.
Yeah, yeah, and so, and so there, but the bottom line is there's like a big shortage of these people and there's major vacancies for these, these type of professionals in all the surrounding counties that have more money than us, so it makes it difficult to compete in. So it really, to me, for what the, the kind of work these guys do, these rates are not, not too high at all, even what we're changing to. So I would definitely recommend doing this and then trying to track it and see what the net effect is.
Yeah, I'd like to...
On dollars.
I'd like to track it and see too. I think that's the interesting to see, but I hope that it will offset it.
Yeah.
Or at least bring it down a little bit.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Wayne, do you have anything?
I'm good with it.
I don't have anything, I'm good with it too. Chairman Nicholson, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. We move this as well.
In agreement, if we can move this too, and then we can fix all these, these rates at once.
All right.
And he would change the part-time openness of the new rates and make those changes. He'll, and he would change his current part-time staff that he has now to the new rates based on their experience too.
Okay.
Do you want me to, I can talk about the effective date for this. I mean, can we, we'll do this in the same pay period, October 2nd?
Yeah.
Just change all the rates at once, October 2nd being effective date.
Okay. All right, so that moves us to action and the only item, or the first item was the only item on action.
That's quite a case.
Is the jury commission appointment. At the last meeting, Shaver presented us a request about the jury commission and Derwood Bennett is willing to serve in this role. We just need approval of that, so I need a motion.
We made the motion, all you gotta do is poll them.
Well, I just opened the board for any additional nominations, just to cover your...
Make a motion that we close all nominations.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll poll the board. Bennett.
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 Bennett, Bennett, Andy? Bennett?
Bennett.
Okay, all right. And all in favor? Do that, or do we have, we don't have to do that since we polled, so I don't have to do that. Okay, gotcha. All right, so we'll move on to item B and it's HVAC at the DSS and the recommendation was with the air handler.
Motion to approve.
Motion to amend number 32.
Motion to approve, motion to amend number 32.
32, okay.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. Any opposed? All right. Item C is the public health nurse two, adding that position.
Motion to add that position and the, what was it, nursing?
Public health nurse two.
Public health nurse three.
All right, we'll advertise that. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item D, the EMS pay rate, changing it to hourly. I have a motion.
Motion to change it to hourly.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the next item is the EMS part-time pay rate change. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Make a motion that we get the rest now read to go on to close the session.
All right, Amber?
To consult with an attorney employed or obtained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege which we decree in the public body, which privileges hereby and knowledge pursuant to general statute 43-318, 1183, to consider and take action with respect to the position to be taken by a county in negotiating a price or other material terms of an agreement for the acquisition or release of real property pursuant to general statute 43-318, 1185, to consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners or any other public body, but to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or some other public body pursuant to general statute 43-318, 1185.
All right.
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll do a five-minute recess, come back to closed. Thank you.
Lord, that works.
I bet Lindy is going to bed and I'm gonna have to fix me up a minute or two.
Mike Strong.
Just John Brown.
I got some too, trust me. I got some too. No wicked little people.
Okay, anything else for good? Then I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're adjourned.
Thank you.